Now calling the seven o'clock out of County Commission meeting to order. I will call on Mr. Johnson for an invocation.
Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning, this evening, and we thank you, Father, for the opportunity to serve you again. But, Father, we realize because of our sin and our foolishness that we're unworthy of that. In your grace, we ask you would part to us the forgiveness of our sins as you were granting to us your wisdom, that we might make good judgments. Father, I pray your blessing upon the folks of this county. We go through these difficult times, that your hand would be upon them, and, Father, you would cause us once again to prosper, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
That's thankful. I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call on Mr. Mashburn for adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I have only one adjustment to the agenda. Under Administrative Matters, item N., which will be Memo Number 16, that is to be deleted from the agenda this evening. Item N., Memo Number 16.
Thank you, Mr. Mashburn. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, we have a motion to accept the Administrative Matters Agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
To move, are there any questions? Have you got a motion? On the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This time, I'm calling Mr. Robinson to introduce guests.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We've got Aaron Overcash, who's a scout from Troop 332 in Mooresville. He's here working on his Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge, and we're glad to see you here. And also with him is his scout master from Troop 332, Seth Overcash. So we're glad to have both of them here tonight.
Like you, Aaron, for coming. At this time, we will open our meeting for public hearing, and I will call on Mr. Parker.
I've got my able assistant helping me here, and I've got this fancy gadget. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm David Parker. I represent Langtree at the Lake and also represent John Q Hammond's revocable trust. We are here asking this evening that you consider the imposition of a Special Assessment Improvement District. You have previously been given a booklet which goes through the same things that I am, in theory, going to click and make happen on this screen. It's a miracle. There are four basic things that I'd like to go over with you fairly quickly. What is Langtree at the Lake? How do these bonds work? What's in the final assessment resolution? And then what happens next? Langtree at the Lake is a approximately 175-acre development in the south end of the county. This is a map of it. What you see there is, in the, well, this does work, in the green, you see the original parcels that were put together by Langtree at the Lake, which consists of Rick Howard, Brad Howard, David Jacobs, Wayne Turner, and myself assembled this land. This tract here, which is in the red, that is the hotel site. That is the John Q Hammond site. And in addition, Tracks One and Track Two have also been assembled, and we are asking that all of these tracts, which are owned by either the people that I just listed that own Langtree at the Lake or John Q Hammond's, have a special assessment imposed against them. Now, I'm told I have allotted 15 minutes, and I'm not going to go through the things that you see in white ink, but if you have a question about it or you want me to go back, I'll be glad to. This is a further description of what the development is, and again, you'll find this in your booklet. The best important thing that's owned here is this. All these items that you see listed, these are all taken out of the Mooresville zoning documents. This property is zoned Village Center Conditional Use. And what that means is, it's essentially an urban use, but it has special provisions added to it. And all of those things are listed here. So the main features are about a mile of lakefront, mile and a half of frontage on I-77, and then this is what it's zoned for. There's 650 condominiums, 600,000 square feet of office and retail. It is a large development. We also have a utilities agreement and sewer capacity authorization in place for the town of Mooresville. And then as far as the impact on the county, which I think you all have been obsessing, and rightfully so, over budget matters here, this will add $800 million to $1 billion to the tax base at full buildout. In other words, if all these things that are up here happen, tax base is increased to $800 million to 1 billion with a B. County revenues, $3.5 million to $4.5 million, depending on your tax rate. And one other interesting aspect is this. This will also increase the cap on your borrowing for general obligation bonds. Not that you all want to incur more debt, but it's always a tool that can be used by the County Commission for appropriate purposes. This is the Langtree team. John Q Hammond's obviously is a very important part of that team, but these are the other folks that are involved, whether it's the architects, the builders. This is a huge company out of Atlanta with offices in Charlotte. You remember where the shopping center was on Independence Midtown, Charlotte, whatever that's called. They're the ones that just finished building that. Colganest is doing the civil and site work. Willis Engineers with water and sewer. Lancaster with the pier system. Cushman and Wakefield and NEI Global are realtors. And Parsons Brinckerhoff is doing the traffic engineering studies, which is something we'll talk about in just a moment when we talk about the final assessment resolution and the assessment methodology. This is all stuff that kind of makes your eyes roll back in your head, like so many of the matters that you all deal with, but it's critically important to making one of these things work. Now, how do these assessments work? And specifically, how do the bonds work? And what impact does it have on the business of this county? There's some statutes that Bill Pope and I have looked at and worked on, and the most important things are these. The county's ability to issue other types of bonds is not impeded, and that's because under the statute, which is all of this really dull stuff over here, there is, in your sworn statement of debt, which Susan gets to work with, this sentence. In 159 and 55, "For purposes of the sworn statement of debt and the debt limitation, revenue bonds and project development financing debt instruments shall not be considered debt and shall not be included in gross debt nor deducted from gross debt." In other words, it does not impact your ability to borrow money, whether it's for schools or whether you're funding or refunding normal county operations. Back on the screen here, what happens if there's a default? If there is a default, the county is not liable. Why is that? These statutes regulate this, and again, they're on this next page. The section here, limited liability, says down, again, I'm looking at the yellow print, "No holder of revenue bonds has the right to compel the exercise of the taxing power by the county or the forfeiture of any of its property in connection with any default their own. Something happens to Langtree or John Q Hammond's, the county has no obligation." Brad, how do I get rid of that? Brad is the master. So, has anybody else done this? Yes. Now, this is a new statute in North Carolina. This was just signed into law by the governor on August 3rd, but it's been around for a long time. As a matter of fact, it's been around since 1736, when Benjamin Franklin started one, I believe, to do a post office in Philadelphia. As of 2002, which was the last numbers that I found, there were 36,000 of these types of districts all across the United States. I just listed the southern states, probably because we're southern, but there are, almost half the states in the country have this kind of facility in place. It's been very popular. Now, when we were before you all for the preliminary assessment resolution, I had Alan Barxdale with me from Cruising Company, which is an underwriter. They have a tremendous amount of expertise. They have done literally hundreds of these, if not more. And Alan is this gentleman who's here. He's available for questions if you want to ask. So if you want to do that at any time, just interrupt me. There's your statute again. Now, you've heard of TIFs. What I've tried to do in this little demonstration, again, is in your packet, is show you what is the difference between a Special Assessment Improvement District and a TIF. And here's the deal. Right now, you're getting $153,261 off of the assessed value of all of those lands that I showed you on that map. At full buildout, you're going to get $3.5 million a year. Now, I have used the conservative $800 million buildout, and I have used your current tax rate in order to derive that. If you did a TIF, then what you do is you earmark monies or carve out monies from that increased taxes from the full buildout. You would carve out this red area if we financed, this assumes a $15 million phase-one finance. This is not the entire 46 that we're asking for. This is just phase one. You would carve that out of your tax proceeds in a TIF, Tax Incremental Financing. That means you would only get the blue area coming into the county. Well, obviously, that's a pretty good investment, because you were just getting this. So by allowing this infrastructure to go through on a TIF, you get this much. But what we're asking for is this one over here. You get all the blue. And what we're asking for is to tax ourselves and do an assessment which is on top of the taxes that are paid because of this buildout. So as opposed to a carve-out with a TIF, which is a wonderful way to finance things, you actually add this own. Now, who will pay that? The developer pays that until anything is actually developed and sold. But after that, you actually have an assessment process, and that's something I'll be glad to answer questions about. It doesn't really feature into the final assessment resolution, but for instance, you were charging the municipalities in this county, I believe, an average of 1.5%. I'm looking at Susan. She would know. I know that Mooresville pays 1.5%. And that's what you would charge us, or whatever number we're able to come up with, in order to administer this. We would provide a third-party administrator in order to keep track of all of the assessments. For instance, if someone comes to us and they say, "Well, look, we don't particularly want to pay this. We're going to buy one of your big pads. We're, you know, a convenience store, and we want to buy one of your pads, and we think you ought to pay the assessment," we may make a separate deal with them and say, "Okay, we'll pay that assessment." All of that is done for you, and what will happen is your tax collector, the way we envision it, and I've talked with Alan about how this works, because he's the expert, but what will happen is the tax assessor will actually get, in their software's format, something they can basically drag and drop into their taxing software so that it will automatically generate those assessments against the property. You do not have to do that. We do that in working with you. You'll have some cost in setting that up, of course, but when you think about what 1.5% of $3.5 million is, I think you can probably cover that. You will not have to hire any additional personnel, we don't believe. What can you do with this? Susan asked me this question. This is right out of the statute, which Bill has and which Joel has looked over as well. These are the different things that can be done with these, and we are doing these. And as Susan has pointed out, we'll have to document this, and we're prepared to do so for the Local Government Commission. I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit, but in the "What Happens Next" section, this thing goes to LGC. Essentially, your function is to let down the drawbridge and let us go into the castle that is guarded by the Local Government Commission. We can't do anything without dealing with the folks in the castle. So that's all we're asking you to do, is let us go to the castle. So we will have to document this, and we're prepared to do so, based on engineering studies, all of the drawout, all of the costing that's been done. David Jacobs, who is one of our partners, who is here this evening, raising his hand back there, is the guru that knows how to put dollars and cents to all these dreams, and he's got that ready to document and go. So we will be using this money for sanitary sewer systems, storm sewers, water systems, streets and sidewalks, and of course, capital costs. And again, I'm not going to go through what's in the white. This, by the way, is an aerial photo or aerial photo drawing, an oblique view of what this development is going to look like. It's going to be something that I think this county's going to be very proud of, and that you, as county commissioners, will be proud that you had a part in doing it, because here's the bottom line, folks. No infrastructure, no development. No development, no revenue. No development, no tax base. No tax base, no revenue. This is critically important. You frankly are going to see a flood of these. Your job in deciding to let down the drawbridge is going to be to determine whether or not the folks that you're looking at should cross that drawbridge and get to LGC. Joel and I have talked about what happens, whether or not that's of right or not, if you meet the statutory guidelines, and that'll be for high-priced elevator lawyers to figure out at some point in the future. We think we qualify, and that you should be happy with us. Drilling down into the details of these said bonds, this is in your little folder, and I know I'm going to go over that 15 minutes, so I'm going to skip this unless someone has questions about it. And if you do, please make me come back. Happy to answer it. The final assessment resolution, if you look in your brochure, the last four pages, four or five pages of your brochure, are the final assessment resolution. I did not include this on the presentation that's up here, but I'd be happy to go through each and every aspect of that. But here it is in a nutshell. The description of the project in general terms is the infrastructure, which I've already described to you. This is Langtree at the Lake plus the Hammond's Hotel. David Jacobs' numbers show that the project's total estimated cost is 57.6, almost 57.7. The basis on which special assessments will be made, that is the assessment methodology, and that is something that engineers do. It's kind of like, and we'll talk about that in just a moment, if you'll bear with me. I know this is complicated stuff, but you're going to see more of these. The special assessment methodology is something that I'll talk about in just a moment. We're asking for you all to allow us to go to the castle and ask LGC for funding of 80% of this. We anticipate on Phase One that we will only ask for an initial issuance of between $15 and $20 million. When I did that chart over here, I ran that on the $15 million. The next item, terms of payment, this is one of the things that the legislature was looking to do when they passed this legislation. You can actually do these things for 10 years under the current law. The new law allowed that to be stretched out to 30 years, and basically, it reduces the payment and makes this infrastructure improvement affordable. That's the bottom line on this. Inclusion of debt service reserves for two years after construction completion, which is basically capitalizing interest, is something that statute provides for, and we are asking you all to let us do that, because basically, there won't be any cash flow until we get the things up and going. So what happens there is the interest gets paid out of the proceeds of the bond. That's part of why I can't tell you exactly why the first issuance is going to be 15 or 20, but it'll be somewhere in there, because capital costs are included. What happens next? We've submitted the petition to the county. You've already had the hearing on the preliminary assessment resolution. The county is, right now, conducting a public hearing, and then you will adopt, we hope, we're praying, that you adopt a final resolution. In conversations with Joel Mashburn and with Bill Pope, the statute is pretty clear that there has to be a 10-day waiting period between your closing the public hearing and actually adopting the final assessment resolution. And it appears to me, Joel, in reading through the statute after we talked earlier, there's a provision in there where the assessed properties can, that have petition to be assessed, can withdraw their petition. That's basically a 10-day cooling-off period or heating-up period, whatever you want to call it. After that 10 days, then you all can vote. We would ask you to consider and move that, once you have closed this public hearing, that you then recess this meeting for 10 days, or whatever your chair and the attorney direct and passes in a motion, and that you reconvene at that time and pass this. To say that time is of the essence on this project would be a gross understatement. So we will ask that you do that. The next thing that will happen is the application for Local Government Commission approval. And then, once they have done that and they are busy getting up to speed down there, I know that there have been some conference calls and that there may be a field trip down to Raleigh to chat with the LGC folks. That is all part of this process, as they get up to speed and learn how these Special Assessment Improvement District bonds work. The next thing that will happen is, assuming that they approve, then it will come back to you all for bond documents. This is the same thing that you've seen many times before, when you do your bond resolutions and your bond order, and then there'll be a preliminary assessment roll. You'll have the hearing on that assessment roll, and then off we go. That's how it works. In some ways, it's pretty complicated, because there's so many steps, but for Alan Barxdale, who has done hundreds of these, this is the normal protocol, and there's nothing very unusual about it. And finally, we are praying that you all approve the final assessment resolution. I have drafted, and you have in front of you, in the last, as I said before, the last four or five pages of your document, the proposed final assessment resolution. Bill Pope and I have had some conversations about that. I will tell you that this has been run by Parker Poe, who has, Donnie Bell is the bond counsel there, a very gifted guy. Why you would spend your life, Bill Pope, doing bond work is beyond me, but that's what he does, and he's an acknowledged expert in the area. He's also one of the attorneys that was instrumental in working with the State Senate to get this legislation passed. And there's, you know, there's no reason to beat around the bush about it. The goal for this is to allow developers to pay for infrastructure, so that the county doesn't have to. And you assess the people that benefit directly from it. No one else gets assessed, only them. It's kind of like if you put sidewalks in front of your house, you're the one that gets to pay for the sidewalk. It's the same collection procedure. It's the same accounting. It's the same deal, it's just taken out on a larger scale. And in fact, sidewalks are included in this. So, that's the presentation. Sorry it ran a little bit over 15 minutes, but not too much. It's 7:22. I'll be glad to take any questions. Alan has flown in here from Arkansas, and if you've got any drill-down questions, he knows a lot more about it than I do, although I will tell you, I've spent a month obsessing over this and trying to learn about as much as I can. Fascinating topic.
Are there any questions for Mr. Parker? He's out of time. Before he sits down? Anyone?
So we're not voting on anything tonight?
Mr. President. Mr. Pope, I believe you have talked with Mr. Parker and are in agreement with what has been presented?
I guess that's right. I have talked to David numerous times and others. I am intrigued with this concept. I think it is, actually, I think it's a very good concept, and I agree with the proposition that the county doesn't have any legal liability. Having said all that, I'm not without some reservations. And frankly, I don't know exactly what they are. I'm somewhat cautious, because I think this is precedent-setting. I do think we'll have numerous opportunities in the future, and that we will want to make developers pay for the infrastructure, rather than taxpayers paying for the infrastructure. I like all of that, but I don't really know anything about the feasibility of this project. I read about it in the paper, and I think it's fantastic. It's beautiful, but I really don't know anything about how feasible it is, nor do I know anything about the impact it'll have on the rest of the county or the infrastructure of the county, the schools, police department, sheriff's department, the health department, all those kinds of things. I don't know to what extent that ought to be important. Those are policy questions. They're not legal questions. From a legal perspective, I don't really have any reservations. I talked to the bond people in New York. They told me that, they share the view that there's no legal liability on the part of the county. We're not pledging the county's faith and credit or taxing authority if we do this. I think there's some remote possibility that you could have some reputational taint if there was a default on the bonds. I don't know how to quantify that. I don't think anybody does. I don't think it's a major issue. I think you can, there's some things that you possibly could do to shore up the thing. I'm not sure what all of those are. I haven't given a great deal of thought to the actual mechanics of how this works. I didn't want to get lost in the trees. I just wanted to see the big picture. I think it's possible to get lost in the mechanics, but I'm assuming that mechanics can actually be made somewhat simple. For example, the assessment basis is on what's called a equivalent residential unit. Did I say that right?
Yes.
And I like that idea. I don't understand exactly how it works when you apply it to a given situation. I don't know if we know in advance what the equivalent residential unit would be for each hotel room or condo or convenience store. And there's some other mechanical issues, like I noticed you say the assessment will be on an acreage basis until the project is platted, and I don't know what plating means, whether that's recording a document and a register of deeds or what, but I don't really think we ought to get lost in all that. Those are details, mechanical details, that I think can be worked out. If the question is, does the county have any legal liability on these bonds? I think the answer is no.
Okay.
Mr. Pope, if I could interject something. The Local Government Commission is charged with determining the feasibility of the sale of the bonds, and part of that study, and Susan has lived through these things, part of that study in this setting is determining whether or not the project itself is feasible and will be able to generate the monies necessary to pay the bond. So that is something that your Local Government Commission does. That's one of the reasons why the North Carolina scheme does not set up self-governing districts. It's because the LGC is so strong and is such a good gatekeeper, and that's why we're asking you all to simply let down the drawbridge and let us go to the castle, and the castle is guarded pretty strenuously by the Local Government Commission. So they're charged with assessing feasibility. So hopefully, that addresses Mr. Pope's concerns. They'll also look at the mechanics of how this is done, and when we come back to you with the assessment roll, we'll have the specifics for you. The equivalent residential unit is an idea where, when you do a traffic impact study, and I don't know how many of those you all have seen, but you look at the fact that an office doesn't generate as many trips as a house during certain periods of the day. When you do a wastewater treatment analysis, certain kinds of uses, like a retail store doesn't generate as much wastewater treatment need as a single-family residence. All of those are taken into account in doing the assessment, because the goal is to do it in the fairest way possible.
it in the fairest way possible. It actually would be the easiest thing for us to do, to ask y'all to simply do it by valuation of each unit. It would make life a lot simpler. Other states that have looked at this have leaned towards doing this more technical, frankly, more expensive analysis. But I'll be glad to drone on about the assessment methodology, if you'd like me to.
No, that's fine, Mr. Parker. See if anybody wants.
Yeah. Susan, I'm not, did you confirm that we have a meeting with the LGC?
They can meet with us on Wednesday, the 29th, and I asked for sometime after 10 o'clock.
Okay. I think my reservations likely will be answered in a meeting with the local government commission. And my reservations are not really legal, they're more trying to get my arms around the mechanics of it, trying to understand everything, trying to think through all the what-ifs, trying to think through all the scenarios that could happen. And since we won't be able to act on this for 10 days, we will have our meeting with LGC by that time anyway. So, I don't think that it's likely that I won't get my questions answered by the LGC.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that if there are no other comments, that y'all do gabble the public hearing closed at the appropriate time tonight, so that that 10 days can start running.
Mr. Parker, we will, go ahead. We will ask comments from the elements.
Yes, sir.
Okay. From any of the commissioners, do you have comments?
Well, I was going, like everyone else, was going to ask of Mr. Pope if he was, to what degree he had any satisfaction that the county was properly insulated from being responsible in this debt. He seems to be pretty satisfied on that. Having dealt with the local government commission in the past, I've got a lot of confidence in those folks, but I wonder to what degree they're going to assess this thing, or are they going to look at your business plan, and they're going to look at the revenue stream related to when the debt service would begin? Mr. Parker, because Mr. Mashburn sent us an email of General Statute 153A, and it says the special assessments may not be levied, however, until the improvement being financed has been completed.
Mr., there are three different sections of that, and that one applies to...
Is that to the TIF, that was?
Yeah, that applies to a different one. You need to go to the very last page.
Okay, then that is, hang on just a second here.
Which one are we looking at?
153 has to do with the TIF plan. That was a question I had, but it says...
Actually, if the, and they're better able to respond to this, but this actually compares the different types of assessments, and the new provision, I don't think includes that language.
Okay, but she says, this is from, not to try to withhold anything, Kara A. Melonzy, and I take it, Melonzy, she's from the School of Government at Chapel Hill. It says the local government still had to front a significant portion of the cost. Is that still related to a TIF, or is that what we're talking about on this side?
We have to issue the actual revenue bonds, but the actual issue should cover all the costs of the issue.
Okay, that's correct. That's part of the capital costs that are incurred, and that's one of the reasons why I can't tell you tonight exactly how much that first phase in issuance is going to be. I mean, I think Bill Pope is correct, LGC really is the watchdog here. But, Mr. Johnson, they're trying to get up to speed as well.
Well, I understand, and, you know, I'm just trying to learn how the process works, and have some degree of comfort before you even begin this process, is how it's going to... Have you talked to anybody, and perhaps the gentleman who flew in here from Arkansas, I apologize, I don't remember his name, can...
Barksdale.
Okay, if he can speak to it, if he's done any in North Carolina. I do know that the local government commission scrutinizes local debt imposed by local government.
There have not been any in North Carolina.
Yeah.
But the statute was just passed August 3rd.
Right, okay. Well, I mean, I assume they're going to look at your business plan, and they're going to say, okay, the debt's going to start on a date certain, and you're going to have some revenue stream to get you from where you are now to that date, when the debt service starts, so that you'll have a revenue stream...
That is why we capitalize interest for the first two years.
Okay.
And that's part of the final assessment resolution that we've put before you for your consideration. But it's a great question, Mr. Johnson, you're exactly right, and that's why the statute authorizes that. When I leaned over to Mr. Barksdale, that's what I was asking him to verify, and that's exactly the intent.
Okay, now...
Can I interrupt a minute?
Yes.
I think a component of your question is a question that I have for the local government commission as well, and that is matching up the cash flow, making sure that the revenue comes in when the bond payments are due. You know, we tax at a certain time of year, based on property on January 1st, and then we collect taxes over in the fall and into early winter. And so, you know, there's a lot of little mechanical things like that, how do you match up the cash flow? A lot of issues like that, that I'm sure there are answers to, I just, I don't know them.
That one's actually covered in the statute. The assessment date is the same date as the rest of the county taxes go out. It essentially goes out on the same statement. And those are excellent questions, and that's part of what the bond district administrator does. Alan, I'm looking at you, that's correct, and that's part of what I was saying before, they actually anticipate dropping the same list of assessments, or the list of assessments in the county's software. Whatever format we're told to send it in, we will send it in, and it'll be a relational database, and it'll just drop in based on the tax ID numbers. I don't think that'll be very complicated, but that one is mandated by statute.
At the root of my question is what Mr. Pope alluded to a few minutes earlier, in that there may be some reputational taint to it. Let me just throw out this and see if this is a realistic fear or not, Mr. Pope. Let's say we embark upon this endeavor, and for some reason, this economic downturn is far worse than any of us envisioned, and, you know, I hope it doesn't happen, and let's say this thing goes south on these folks. And they're in default on these bonds. And if the bonds aren't paid, and we collect the assessment, at some point, the bondholder's going to come to us and say, you've been collecting these assessments, we want our money. And I'm assuming there's going to be some legal vehicle by which we're going to start giving them the assessment that we gathered from these properties. Now, when we agree, or told by a court at some point, that we, yes, we've been gathering these assessments, and you are the legal bondholder, and you do have a legitimate debt that we intend to pay, and in an unrelated matter, say we want to go to the bond market and borrow $100 million for schools, but to this matter where we've been hauled into court by some bondholder somewhere, I mean, are we going to be embarrassed by that?
I think you're going to be embarrassed if there's a default. The question really is, is that going to affect, it will not affect your ability to issue more bonds. The statement that Mr. Parker made is correct. There's not anything about that that will affect your ability to issue bonds. The question is not whether it affects your ability to issue them, it's whether it affects your ability to sell them.
Right.
I don't think anybody knows the answer to that. I did talk to Neil Kaplan, our bond counsel, about that very question. He says, he sort of hedged his answer, he said he thinks there's a possibility of some reputational taint, but he didn't...
Sorry, who did you ask that question to?
Neil Kaplan is a lawyer in New York, who's served with, he's with the Sidely Austin firm, who has served as our bond counsel. That firm has served as our bond counsel for a long time. He is not, in fairness, he's not highly conversant with these things either, has some general familiarity with them, as they're applied in other states. This legislation was enacted in August of this year. Nobody's done it in North Carolina yet, to my knowledge. And I don't, Steve, I don't think it's possible to quantify, to say, yeah, you definitely, it's definitely going to hurt you if you have a default. I suspect that there'll be some taint. How serious that is, I don't know. I don't know if anybody knows.
You may have to pay a higher rate of interest on your bonds in order to sell them, or something like that.
Well, it's possible. I don't, I'm not, I don't know that it's very likely. I think a more provocative question to me is, what is the real possibility of a loss? And I don't know that I know the answer to that. I think it is extremely remote, because the lien of this assessment is going to be junior-only to a federal tax lien, and to our property tax lien. It's going to be ahead of everything else.
Pope, that's on the screen here, right down here at the bottom, laying that very thing out that Mr. Pope's talking about. And if I may interject, Mr. Barksdale has dealt with these very issues and questions of default, and the impact on the ability of counties to sell other bonds. Could he answer that question, Mr. Chairman?
He can, if you'll go ahead and identify yourself again.
I'm Alan Barksdale with Cruisin' Associates. We're an investment banking firm. Basically, to answer your question, the event of default on the bonds would not occur until the assessments were not collected. So, typically, the assessment is assessed and billed, and the payments come in, and they go to the county, and then they're remitted to the trustee. There's a trustee that acts on behalf of the bondholders, and that money would then be remitted to the trustee to be held in a trust account, to be paid on whenever the next payment dates are due. So, and there's also a one-year reserve fund for the amount of the annual debt service due on the bonds. So, in the event the assessments were not paid, first would be to draw on the reserve fund, but at the same time, there's a remedy to that in which the property would go to tax sale. And so, the proceeds of that tax sale are either used to pay that year's assessment, or they're used to completely pay off the total assessment, depending on how an individual or whomever would buy. So, essentially, the risk of a transaction, and similar to this, would be exactly what Mr. Pope was alluding to, which would be the amount of the bonds that you are issuing, and how does that amount of issuance compare to the total market value of what it is priming? So, essentially, if you had $100 million worth of infrastructure and vertical improvements, and somebody were borrowing $10 million, then an investor would be able to assume, not guarantee, but assume, that in the event assessments weren't paid, they would think that that property could be liquidated for $10 million, assuming that there had been $100 million. So, to answer your question, people don't flippantly go out and invest in bonds, and these aren't mom and pops either, these are people that understand what they're doing. They will gauge the risk based on the borrowing amount to the total value of the property that's being assessed, because that is the true security. And another security is the ability of the owner of the property, or the development company, to pay the assessment in the event the property doesn't sell. So, I mean, if the development group were to put in X amount of money, and they had a choice to lose that money, or pay their assessment if their development were to go slowly, then they would probably pay the assessment. But, because they lose the land, it goes to tax sale. So, the remedy is, so essentially, if you didn't have your traditional taxes paid, it's essentially the same remedy, and then any proceeds of the tax sale, there are penalties, and the cost of legal are paid first from the tax sale, prior to reimbursing the bondholder.
Okay. Who, I'm not trying to wear you out...
That's no problem.
Folks in this county hired me to look after them, and that's all I'm trying to do.
I understand.
Who, this one-year's reserve, who holds that?
The trustee does, for the benefit of the bondholder. And you wouldn't have an individual that purchased bonds come forward, the trustee acts on behalf of the bondholder.
Okay. You've never done one of these in North Carolina?
No, sir, no one has done one.
Well, I'm going to give you some advice.
Okay.
The local government commission is a fine bunch of folks. It's their job to keep you from doing something stupid or wrong, okay? But about halfway through this, you're probably going to be of the idea that their job is to keep you from doing anything good, too. So, you've got a process ahead of you.
And then let me, if I may, speak to reputational risk. I think the market, the capital markets are very mature, in terms of, people know what they're investing in, and, for example, we have NARMsers, which are regulatory requirements and entities that report. So, if Iredelle County were to sell GO bonds, I can go look your name up, pull up all the bonds you've done that have ever been registered, and look it up by Q-SUP, and tell you anything and everything I want to know about that. So, in particular, these bonds will be, basically, they will have an asterisk, and when you pull up these bonds on Bloomberg, or whatever publication you're looking, it will note the security of the bond, meaning that it's secured by a special assessment, and that it will denote that it is limited to accredited investors and qualified institutional buyers only. So, anybody purchasing these would immediately know, because it will be required, and it'll be stamped on the front of the offering document. And then, you know, completely opposite of that, when you issue general obligation bonds, it's very easy to determine the difference. And rating agencies, which would typically rate the value of the investment, or the potential ability to be paid back, have come out with many, many publications that note that things such as industrial development bonds, and certain types of revenue bonds that are unrelated to conventional governmental business, do not impact the rating. And most investors that would invest in your general obligation bonds would base their investment based on the rating, and/or bond insurance or credit enhancement that's provided.
Could I ask one question while you're talking about that? I've tried in my own mind to figure out what is the worst-case scenario, and I don't know that I have a good idea of that, but it seems to me that the worst-case scenario is a default by the developer in midstream. Let's say the infrastructure's half in, the water line's halfway there, the sewer line's halfway there, and the developer walks away. Tell us how you see, what you see happening in that scenario.
Well, first off, we would not underwrite a transaction or do a transaction unless the full component of the phase that we're doing is funded upfront. So, in other words, the full amount of the debt or costs that are needed upfront must be funded in terms of Phase 1. Typically, all that money's funded Day 1 into a construction fund, which is, you know, typically, you remit a draw request to the trustee, the trustee then remits that, and we have a third-party consultant district manager that monitors the payment. So, once the work is put in, or as it's being administered, there's a third party that verifies that on behalf of the trustee and the bondholders. And so, let's just say, for example, if there was $10 million of construction that needed to be done on improvements, and there were $8 million in bonds issued, well, we wouldn't issue $8 million in bonds, hoping that they would come forward with additional $2 million. We would require that their $2 million go into the account as a contingency of funding the 8. So, because, as you're going to know, if you have a half-built water line, it's pretty much worthless unless you finish it out. So, we would actually require that all of the different components be bonded, and not to exceed bids or receive, so, you know, that's a requirement, not an option. that's, that's a requirement, not an option.
Bill, that's also why you capitalize two years of interest, so that that worst-case scenario cannot happen.
Well, I don't know if two years is enough.
Well, the trust, the trustee essentially in that case would take over the project and run it out based on the money that was there in order to save the bondholders. Remember, LGC is the guardian to make sure that this project is feasible and that the bonds can sell. The bonds will not sell if the bond buyers think that we're gonna default. Hence the instrument of the trustee to make sure that your concerns, all of which are very valid, if you are a bondholder, get answered. Because if you are a bond buyer, remember, your problem is right in here. No holder of revenue bonds, let's say you buy one of these bonds, you do not have the right to compel the exercise of the taxing power of the county or the forfeiture of any of the county's property in connection with any default their own. You come and get the land.
If you'll note on this, you're gonna see at the bottom, it says capitalize interest for the first two years after construction completion. So I think what's left out of there is the fact that you're also going to be capitalizing the interest during construction.
Okay.
So there's gonna be interest carried during construction. And so you have two components. One is the construction phase and then I would envision the two years of stabilization, as so to speak, meaning that you have pre-sales. So that's essentially gonna, if the construction was eighteen months, they're gonna literally be asking for two years and eighteen months, you know. So during the construction is logical to capitalize and then that may, that is an option, not a requirement. So you may have some larger developers that potentially say, I only need twelve months after construction because I already have hard contracts.
If, if, if it was a good idea for the contractor to have a performance bond, um, where would that be required? Would that be required by the LGC or as a part of the, um, um, bond documents or by the commission here?
It would, it would probably be a part of the component of the, all in the trust indenturing requirements for the purchases of the, for the purchasers of the bonds, um, which I would assume would tie all into, if I, you know, if I always look at it as though I were giving the advice, I would imagine the LGC is gonna wanna have, see evidence of that in order to prohibit a partially completed. Cause if you look at the problems that have resulted from these type of transactions, it has typically been from a developer borrowing money and disappearing. Building half of it, oh, I'm out of money. And then so they've had poor mon- they have, they've been poorly monitored. Well, you can, you can stem that, you know, you can just completely stop that from happening by proper draw request requirements. And you have a, literally have a manager that goes out and visits the site before money is distributed and monitors the construction. So I, I would say the LGC is probably gonna require it. I know, I know that we would.
And of course, his job is to sell these things to buyers that will continue to buy bonds from him. So it's in his best interest to make sure that he sells a good product to these bond buyers. So, and you know, it's, it's capitalism. It's the free market doing what it's supposed to do.
But reputational risk, one thing I forgot to mention, I intended, what would be severely negatively impacted or at least caused heavy scrutiny to, you know, make people heavily scrutinized would be in the event you had one of these transactions that was a special assessment bond that did go into default, any special assessment bond that you would issue in the future would be, I mean, it would be heavily scrutinized. So that would be, you know, that would occur. Um, so, you know, I, some states have laws that require a minimum amount of, of what I call value to lien requirements, like a three-to-one requirement. Utah has a three-to-one requirement on raw land. Um, so you, I mean, it, it varies across the country, but, uh, you know, it, ultimately, we, we wanna be paid back too. We're not in the business of lending.
What kind of ratio would we expect to have here?
Oh, it's substantially greater than that.
You're, you're at three-to-one today. If we put, if we did the twenty million, the land, which is subject to being seized by the bondholders, is more than three times that under its current appraised value. One of the things that Florida does, which you know more about than I do, I've just read the cases, but one of the things that Florida mandates is that the increase in the value of the property, um, exceed those ratios all the way through the construction process. So that if your worst-case scenario came true, half of twenty million dollars worth of infrastructure presumably would at least increase the value of the land by ten million dollars. You've got ten million on top of sixty million dollars worth of raw land value. You're at seventy million to cover a twenty million dollar bond. And remember, the only thing, as you pointed out, Mr. Pope, the only thing that is superior to these bonds is y'all's taxes and federal tax liens. And that, that's it. In other words, that first mortgage holder, they're in behind these bondholders. They're the ones with the issues. And I will tell you that we have talked with our lenders, uh, and our lenders, one of our primary lenders is out of South Carolina. Uh, they have seen these things for years and they are comfortable with our project basically being in second place behind these bonds. And we can't go forward without those lenders. And, and again, that's the invisible hand of Adam Smith, making sure that the bonds are feasible. But LGC, Mr. Johnson, who we're hoping we can convince to look at this in a timely manner, uh, LGC is the watchdog there.
I was just, I was just done. I thought you, I thought I just heard you quote Adam Smith.
Well, I, I, I got bad news for you. I'm a Phi Beta Kappa graduate in economics from the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill and I've read those books.
Yeah.
But then I like John Maynard Keynes too, so we can talk about that on another day.
Well, I don't hold him in such high regard. Uh, it looks to me like that I'm becoming more comfortable with the idea that we have a significant degree of insulation here. Basically, where you're at now, if we give you our blessing and you fellows leave here tonight, you're gonna go to the local government commission, you're gonna have to present them a business plan that they're gonna sign off on.
Yes, sir.
And if it doesn't pass enough, you're done.
You are correct.
Okay.
We're just asking you to let down the drawbridge.
Did I, how you're right, you're meeting with the LGC in addition to this meeting? Is that what?
Uh, we're, yeah, we're meeting with them the twenty-ninth.
Yes. We had set it for the twenty-eighth this afternoon and they had a mail later that they had to change it for the twenty, the twenty-ninth.
Uh, I believe I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Parker, later date, I'd like to get you assessment of Milton Friedman, but we won't do that.
Yes, sir. You're, you're not gonna be surprised by any-
Yeah, I'm, I've got a couple. And, and, and before I, before I start, I guess it's, uh, you know, Steve mentioned it and I'll, I'll say it again. The, uh, you know, our, our questions are really, are really geared around somewhat of a worst-case scenario, which when y'all first started talking about this and, uh, and, and when I, I spoke with the Howards and with you, David, about this, you know, that was four thousand points on the Dow and, uh, uh, an economic crisis ago that, that we first spoke. So a lot of, a lot of my questions are, are geared towards if, if, uh, you know, if, if the worst that would happen to Langtree happened, what would, you know, what happens to the, to the county? And also, I'm, I'm kinda curious as to, um, what are the different impacts of the county? So if the, if my questions don't have answers and you gotta find them later, that's, that's great, because I can ask them now and, and you've got some time to-
Sure.
To, to come up with them. And I guess this is our version of, uh, of, it's too big to fail Iredelle County style. I mean, this is a, a big project and, um, and, and y'all are talking about some big numbers long-term. Uh, my first question is, you know, y'all are throwing around the, the figure of about a billion dollars total build-out. When?
Uh, well, we thought it was gonna be five years. Um, but, but the forecast now would run it out to-
Seven plus.
Seven to ten years. Um, so it's slower and consequently, that's why you don't see us up here saying we'd like to float the entire forty-six million. We just wanna do phase one. Um, one thing to keep in mind is, um, notwithstanding my friend here from Arkansas, the bulk of us are from right here in Iredelle County. We're not going anywhere. We have staked our lives and fortunes on this project, whatever that means. It means an awful lot to me and, and my wife reminds me of that on about a daily basis. Uh, so we're very cognizant of the economic downturn and we're adjusting our schedule accordingly. And that's part of what we're gonna have to talk with LGC about. I mean, they're gonna be looking at those economic trends. They've got the economists down there, notwithstanding which school they may come from, uh, but they got some incredibly bright people down there.
Yeah. The, um, and the part about the bonds where it says, well, we don't have to report, i- i- if the bonds were to go into default, we don't have to report them. That's, am I wrong in thinking that's kinda like when the judge tells the jury disregard that remark where the guy just said, I stabbed her in the heart?
It's exactly like that. It is, uh, what, what we would call a legal fiction. Uh, it's a fact in the law, but it's not a fact anywhere else. When you have your report of gross debt, you do not include in that report to LGC-
Mm-hmm.
-these bonds. But of course, we have to go to LGC, excuse me, to get blessings for these bonds. So of course, they know it, but it does not go against your bonding cap. That's why I brought up the point before, and Alan was the one that pointed that out to me. When you have the increase in tax base, it actually will increase your bonding cap, uh, by a-
But that's a build-out. If we make, if we make it to build-out, we're, we're out of the woods. I'm not, I'm not worried about ten years from now. If, if there's a billion dollars worth of property ten years from now on the ground, there's, you know, I, I'm not worried about the next twenty years as, as much, okay? Because, because it worked. The gap, you know, we're all, you know, we're all making a bet in this thing and the bet worked. You know, my curio- my, uh, my concern, I guess, is between when, when, uh, basically you're borrowing your own interest payments for three years, is that, that after that point, after that point, if things aren't going well, you know, what happens that, what happens then? I think that's kinda the, the, the critical period. I mean, that's a crystal ball. I mean, you know, if I, if I knew what the economy was really gonna do a month from now, you know, I wouldn't be an Iredelle County commissioner. I mean, it's like predicting the weather and we're looking four years out. So, so that, that's why I'm asking the questions. Let, let me redirect here to, uh, to Mr. Pope.
You want Alan to answer that question or was that rhetorical?
No, I mean, I, I, I don't expect him to answer what's gonna happen four years from now. I don't know.
But I think he can tell you what the experience is within other jurisdictions.
First off, I don't, we're not gonna issue bonds hoping that we can build it and they will come. I think on, on the front end, there will be pre-sales and there are existing contracts and there will be firm agreements in place with deposits that are non-refundable for parcels of property that are within the district or residences.
And that's before you start putting in the infrastructure?
Correct. Yes, I mean, vertical, vertical construction loans will be approved. So I mean, we're not just basically saying we're gonna go issue fifty million in bonds, put the infrastructure in, put a sign up, hope to sell the lots.
Okay.
Those days are over.
They have to be committed to come. They are over. They have to be committed to come before we can build. So it's the movie title in reverse.
Okay. Uh, uh, the next I was gonna say, I, I'll, I'll quote one of my favorites is Ronald Reagan. He said, "Trust but verify." I mean, I, I hear there are lawyers, you know, there are experts saying this.
Well, don't, don't curse him with being a lawyer.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, I was pointing at you. I'm only cursing you, Dave.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Pope, we need to hear you, you say these things before it's all said and done. Uh, you know, no, no offense, but I mean, that's why you, that's why you have to.
None taking. That, that's, that's why we're here praying.
All right. Next one is, um, is to Ms. Blumstein, which is, you know, um, and, and, and David, I'm not picking on you, but, uh, anytime somebody says, "All you gotta do," my experience has been when they say that to me, it, it's always a lot more complicated than that. Being able to, to run our tax office and, and collect these assessments, when, when it's relatively easy and straightforward, when we have a ha- you know, a dozen owners, I don't think it will be that difficult. When, when it, when it, um, when it's a mixture of the current owners, people that are, have built out and they're, they're living there or they're, they're in there, and then the people who've signed contracts to build there, that's when it's gonna get complicated. I mean, or, or, I know that we're not prepared today to do that, but, um, I mean, it, do you foresee some problems here and, and, you know, I mean, where are we as far as getting those resolved so that, so that we don't put our own staff in a, in a, in a, in a mess? And I asked the Howards the same question when I met with y'all many moons ago.
We haven't started looking at it yet. Um, I think it's gonna be important to know the numbers of potential parcels that will be billed and the, uh, collection methods that'll be used if someone fails to pay their assessment. Um, and I also think it's important to know that, that taxes are due September first, although the majority of people pay them in, in Janu- uh, December or January. So that's gonna be very important in timing so that those assessments can be collected or timed with the annual debt service payment so that once collections, the collections are in before we have to make a payment. But I'm not prepared to answer about the additional workload to the staff until we know exactly the numbers that we're talking about.
We're, and I am looking at full build-out numbers, but when you, when you do look at it, one and a half percent of this smaller number, which is eight hundred million at your current tax rate, one and a half percent of that, um, will, will help you a little bit.
What, what sort of timing are you looking at that, I mean, what, what sort of build-out do you need? And of, and I'm asking you a hard, um, probably impossible question. What sort of build-out do you need to, to get it where you're able, y'all are able to pay all the, all the debts and all the bonds and all the obligations?
David Jacobs, put those numbers together. And David, can you address that as far as the timing? Yeah, can you step up here and you, you need-
I can't give a specific answer to that.
Okay. Uh, we'll ask that question again then.
LGC will beat on us until we give that complete stream. It's like Mr. Johnson said, we have to submit a business plan and lay all of it out. This is David Jacobs, uh, one of the partners in Langtree.
This is an incremental build-out. It, it does start day one and go from zero to eight hundred million. Uh, the first phase is all we're talking about today. So, uh, we project that phase being three to four-year maximum build-out. Uh, a good part of it is, is pre-sold, pre-leased and many contracts in hand today. So we've got a good starting point. Once we go forward with it, uh, the underwriters will make sure that our pre-sales, pre-commitments meet their threshold. So when, when we talk eight hundred million dollars, we're not talking about it right now. It's a ten-year process. So there are many belts and suspenders holding this thing up and they will verify it three or four different ways from yesterday.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I- The question, just so everybody remembers, the question was, how many years from now do y'all expect that it will be until, until your, your, this build-out is able to, to pay its debts and obligations in a, in a timely manner? I, I know you're saying, well, this is phase one and this, my, my question is how many years-
Well, if construction is, if construction is twelve to eighteen months and there's a two-year reserve after that, then it has to be, we'll have to show LGC that we can make these payments at the end of three years or they will not allow the issuance of the bonds. Again, you know, I respect the county's questions and they are very good questions, but quite frankly, you're asking the LGC questions, uh, which you should.
Oh, yeah.
But LGC will ask those in, in a far more strenuous fashion, quite frankly, than you would. And I think that's what Mr. Johnson was alluding to.
If he passes LGC, he's done a pretty good job.
Okay.
I think the, the request of us is to, to table this meeting to some later date.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've not heard from the public, if there's any public out there yet, that we got that to do. So if there's, no, you got any questions before I move to the-
Well, just on procedure, we, we're to table it or are we to-
We can continue.
Uh-
Yeah, we can table it or continue it. You can continue.
Same thing.
But do we not have to, to create a resolution to allow them to take it to, to the local government commission?
No, we do that at the next meeting.
But that's actually part of the, uh, final assessment resolution is the direction to send it to LGC. Y'all are the ones that send it to LGC, not us. But Mr. Howard has something that he wants to add and, um, if y'all will allow us to-
Okay, you got three minutes, Mr. Howard.
One minute.
Go ahead.
One minute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like for us to step back. We've heard a lot of technical things tonight and I think this is a very good vehicle for future growth in this county. One thing I'd like for us to step back just a minute and say, we're from Iredelle County. It's one of the best counties in the state with the best opportunity going forward. If we were just wiping the slate clean tonight and we said, we have some issues generating revenue dollars going forward. We're in some unusual times. If we looked at the county and said, we wanna invest some money to generate those revenue dollars, where might we look? Well, I think I would look at the area where it's gonna generate the most- Well, I think I would look at the area where it's going to generate the most, where you have the highest values, where you have an employment center, where you have an emerging, dynamic community. And if we weren't looking for special districts, we weren't looking for TIFs, we were looking to invest, put infrastructure in to grow this community, and Langtree wasn't even here. We were just standing back in the meetings you might have had today. Where would be a good place to do that? I think we take the time and ask ourselves those questions. We might be very surprised with where that area is. Where are we going to get the biggest bang going forward? A business decision. We've invested 50 million plus in this deal. We believe in Iredale County. We believe this is the right place, that it's a great area for future growth. If we're ever going to have a lot of growth in this county, quick, coming out of this, whatever we're in right now, where's that going to be? Is it going to be out 10 miles somewhere from the interstate? Is it going to be out in a very rural area? Or is it going to be in a new emerging interchange beside the second-largest company in North Carolina? That's a question I would ask myself, and I would ask you tonight to think about that. I think what we've talked about tonight is a vehicle that can accelerate that, can put these dollars in to good use in the county, to build the schools, to build the new fire departments, to do those things that we desperately need to do in this county. But I just wanted to make, because sometimes we get called up in the technical things. But if you just step back and looked at tonight, where would I invest in this county to grow the tax base, to grow those revenue dollars, to do those things? I just challenge you, but appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
At this time, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in regards to this request? Is this a public hearing? We have not asked that question as of yet. You do have that right. If you'd like to speak, you have three minutes. You can come up at this time. Just state your name when you come up. Anyone else from your group?
We simply ask that you close the public hearing at the appropriate time to let the 10 days start running.
Thank you. If there's no one else wishing to speak, we'll move on to the next public hearing and close this public hearing.
I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, just for the record, without going to the next one.
Okay. The hearing's closed at this time.
Oh, you've closed. I didn't hear you.
Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make one brief comment. I believe this is a high mark in the history of Iredale County politics, for I've heard Mr. Parker cite Adam Smith and admit to the fact that he prayed in a public meeting. I'd like to thank the Howard family for the positive influence they've had on him.
Okay.
We'll move on then to Ms. Blumstein. Come on, next public hearing.
Thank you. This is the time that was called to consider, or to have a public hearing to consider issuing a fixed-rate financing to refund our outstanding 2003 installment payment revenue refunding bonds that were issued at a variable rate and swapped to Bank of America Securities for fixed rate. And we would like to refinance this deal to a fixed deal to solve or cure some of the problems that we've seen since mid-July, when Ambac Insurance was downgraded by S&amp;P, Moody's, and Fitch. Currently, the fixed rate that we're paying on that refunding bond is 3.3%. However, the swap rate is almost 8% today, and we have secured financing at a fixed rate of 4.34%. And that's the reason that we want to move forward with this refunding. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions regarding this action? Do we, we need a motion for this particular, don't we?
Um, no.
Okay, we got the public.
I have another resolution to...
Go ahead, and then I'll go to the public, and then I'll come back to the house situation.
I got a comment, if I can. It may look like we're not doing the right thing because we're replacing some bonds at a lower rate with bonds at a higher rate, but the fact, we did roll the dice, folks, on this interest rate swap thing, which, because of things in the financial community, is pretty much turned upside down. But rest assured that the interest rate you got on the front end saved you substantially over what you would have gone if you'd just had a fixed rate. So you have saved money up to this point if you had gone with another option. The beautiful part of this is that the county is not in the terrible situation that a lot of local governments are in, and that their bond rating has gone down to the point that they can't move in and out of the bond market quickly and at a reasonable rate of interest. And a lot of local governments are stuck because of that. And I think our ability to do this, in which we did save money, and even though we're going to a little higher interest rate now, we did save money on the front end, and our ability to pursue another financial vehicle to do this is a testimony to the good steward of our staff and my fellow commissioners. I'd just like to make that point.
Thank you.
I would like to add that when we entered into that swap arrangement, you know, we were told the worst thing that could ever happen was for the U.S. to adopt a flat federal tax rate. Well, we've seen that that's not the worst thing that can happen. The worst thing that can happen for this deal was for bond insurers to lose their ratings.
Any comments, Ms.? Okay. This, too, is a public hearing. Do we have any comments? Anyone wishing to speak regarding this request from the audience? If not, are the closed public hearings closed? Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Ms. Blumstein, I believe we need to, we have two motions. Is that correct?
Yes, following the adoption, or, excuse me, after the public hearing closes. I also have a resolution making certain findings.
Okay.
I'll just read that by title, please. Resolution making certain findings relating to the refunding of certain bonds pursuant to an installment financing agreement and directing the Director of Finance and Administrative Services to file application for approval thereof by the Local Government Commission. This resolution does include certain findings that are a requirement of the Local Government Commission, that it's a feasible project, and that by advice of our investment bankers, that the sums to file due under this installment financing are not excessive for the purpose, and that counsel to the county has rendered an opinion that the proposed undertakings are authorized by law and are purposes for which public funds may be expended. The installment financing agreement under these circumstances is preferable to a general obligation bond issued for this purpose. And the estimated cost of refunding the 2003 bonds pursuant to the installment financing agreement compares reasonably and favorably with an estimate of similar costs for GO bonds. And the debt management policies of the county have been carried out in strict compliance with the law, including the filing of all required audits and reports for the Local Government Commission, and the county is within its statutory debt limit and is not in default with respect to any of its outstanding indebtedness. The county estimates that no property tax increase will be required to retire the debt. We have made timely payment of all sums owed by the county with respect to the principle and interest of all outstanding debt obligations. And this also requests the Local Government Commission to approve this installment financing agreement, and that it directs me to complete all applications and execute all documents required in connection with obtaining the approval. We are represented, or the LGC is requested to approve our professionals that have been selected. Special counsel is Sidley Austin. Trustee will be U.S. Bank. I believe what was included in your package had an error. It showed Wachovia, but it will be U.S. Bank. And the corporate counsel will be Presley, Thomas, and Conley. They will be representing Iredale County Public Facilities Corporation. And all actions heretofore taken by the county manager and myself in connection with the 2008 bonds, your accept, in accepting the proposal of RBC Centura to purchase the bonds and selecting a trustee or ratified. I ask the board to consider a motion to accept that resolution or adopt that resolution.
Okay, you've heard the resolution. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept it as read.
Any questions? Go ahead, motion? All in favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, aye.
The second resolution is a resolution approving the sale by Iredale County Public Facilities Corporation of installment payment revenue refunding bonds payable from certain installment payments to be paid by the County of Iredale, North Carolina, approving a proposed second supplemental installment financing agreement to finance the cost of refunding installment payment revenue refunding bonds. Iredale County School Project Series 2003 issued by said corporation for the benefit of said county, approving certain other documents and actions relating thereto, and authorizing other official action in connection therewith.
Okay. You've heard the resolution. Do we have a motion to accept the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Ice. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, aye. Now, Mr. Pope, we're going back to you on, will 10 days be enough for you to get back with us on this information regarding the first?
I think so.
Okay.
I don't know when the next regular meeting would be, anyway. Be about, what, 14 days?
Well, actually, so we have the council the November the 4th meeting, so it would actually scheduled to be November the 18th. So if they do this, then they would need to continue tonight's meeting until a later date.
Yeah, by day certain.
Okay.
If you feel that that's the way, the best way to do it.
Yeah. I guess the question really is, when do you want to meet again?
Well, Mr. Parker, I believe time is of essence to you folks, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
So, how about November 6th? What's that look like to everybody?
There's plenty of notice for me. I can work it out.
November 6th, I'm gone.
It's good for me.
Jeff?
What about you, Mr. Williams?
It's going to be hard for me to meet.
How about before then?
Before then, 31st is on Friday. That's 10 days.
Okay. Are we expecting the government commission to give a...
We don't know that answer until they meet with them.
You mean, a blessing on the day of the meeting?
No.
Probably not.
No, they won't be back for another meeting if it doesn't pass the Local Government Commission.
We can set the meeting, council the meeting, isn't that right?
Yeah.
We can't do it if we continue it, right?
I think they're going to enlighten us over here a little bit.
Okay.
Well, we were saying, this, the meeting that we're having with the Local Government Commission basically is to educate us on the process and forgive us an opportunity to ask them questions. You correct me if I'm wrong, but there is going to be a required meeting at some point in time, and I don't, this is not the meeting that's required by the statute.
Once you, if you were to approve this, it then goes to LGC. They will mandate a preliminary meeting where probably the same set of folks will go down and chat with them. It'll take a good 90 days, and quite frankly, I'm probably being pretty optimistic, it'll take a good 90 days for LGC to digest this and approve it. But that won't start until y'all approve the final assessment resolution. We can't do anything without you.
Right. Okay.
We can't adopt that resolution without Local Government Commission approval, is that right?
Right. And they're going to meet on the 29th or something? They have to have that meeting before we...
There's no requirement by the statute that we meet with the LGC before you approve the preliminary resolution. But we still have questions about the process, the procedures, and they have granted us an opportunity to come down and meet with them. And that's what the meeting on the 29th is. And we would be in a better position to advise you after that. And that's the purpose of the meeting on the 29th.
I agree. We need to, you need to have that meeting before we have our meeting.
They are, on the 29th.
But Mr. Robertson is going to be gone until when?
Well, we only need three votes. And it's going to be a special meeting.
It'd be the 17th of November before I'm...
Well, why don't we let our folks meet with the LGC? And Mr. Parker and his folks are going to go along, I understand. And then our folks can come back to Statesville, digest all this, have some things resolved in their own mind, and then forward some information to us. And then the chairman can contact us after that, and have a call meeting.
It'd be better if we had a special call.
Is that agreeable?
Yeah.
It's agreeable with me.
That agree will be with you, Mr. Parker.
If it's your pleasure, then we'll do whatever you'd like.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're not setting a date?
No. We'll get back with you.
I will say this, Mr. Johnson. I don't think you're going to get all of your questions answered by LGC. All you're going to get is a, sort of a format of where they're going, because they will not be able to answer all those questions until they do their due diligence, and that's what that 16 to 90-day process is going to be about.
I understand, but...
And that's why we'd like you to go ahead and to put it, to put it in the vernacular, get on with it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parker. We'll move on, Ms. Fettman, Ms. Mashman.
Mr. Chair, the following items under Administrative Matters Consent Agenda. Item A, request for approval of Budget Amendment Number 13 to recognize a grant from the Humane Society of the United States for animal control euthanasia training. Item B is request for approval of Budget Amendment Number 14 for the appropriation of undesignated fund balance of unexpected truck repairs at the Union Grove Volunteer Fire Department. Item C is request from the Health Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 15 to approve access for Moore'sville Services and Program Support Capabilities. Item D is a request from the Health Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 16 to recognize additional Women's Health Services Funds. Item E is request from the Health Department for approval of Amendment Number 17 for additional WIC grant revenues and for increase of the WIC Processing Assistant III from a 0.8 or 80% FTE to a full-time FTE. Request from the Health Department for approval of the 2008 write-offs. Item G is request for approval of the September 2008 refunds and releases. Item H is request for approval of, number one, the adoption of a resolution replacing the property tax on certain heavy equipment with a 1.2% gross receipts tax, and, number two, to the designation of the tax collector as a deputy finance officer for the purpose of collecting and enforcing the gross receipts tax. Item I is request for approval of the Moore'sville Graded School District FYO 9 Capital Outlay Funding Plan. Item J is request from the Sheriff's Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 18 to transfer $24,000 from seized funds for the purchase of a 2008 pickup truck. Item K is request from the Sheriff's Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 19 to transfer $6,341 from seized funds to purchase an underwater radar system for use on the Lake Patrol boat. Item L is request from the Sheriff's Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 20 to transfer $4,000 from seized funds to purchase an ACU unit, portable, mobile repeater. Item M is request for approval of the 2009 to 2011 WorkFirst Plan, electing county status. Item O is request for... Item O is request for approval of an agreement with Hardigan Management Enterprises for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Application and Preparation Services. Item P is approval of the management proposals as recommended by the county staff for the operation or the management of the Twin Oaks Golf Course. Item Q is approval of the September thirty, two thousand and eight, and October seven, two thousand and eight minutes. Those are the consent agenda items under administrative matters, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mashman. Are there any additional corrections to the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, been moved. Are there any questions regarding the motion? If not, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have. Announcements of actions occurring on boards and commissions. Animal Grievance Committee, one announcement. Crossroads Behavioral Healthcare, two announcements. Nursing Home Advisory Committee, one announcement. Appointments to boards and commissions. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one appointment. Trauma Plan and Zoning Board. Do we have anyone for Juvenile Crime Prevention Council?
Moved to table, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to table, all in favor, motion, please, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Trauma Plan and Zoning Board, ETJ, one appointment.
Move to table, Chairman.
Motion to table, all in favor of the motion, please, say aye.
We had, we had, we had a recommendation from Troutman on that one.
Okay.
I would, Mr. Chairman, if it pleases you, I'd like to nominate Mr. Steve Cash.
Okay.
For that Troutman ETJ, he's?
Most Steve Cash?
Fine businessman in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir.
All in favor of the motion, please, say aye.
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 As have. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, four appointments.
Moved to table, Mr. Chair.
Motion to table, all in favor of the motion, please, say aye.
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 As have. Station Planning Board, ETJ, one appointment.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to table, all in favor of the motion, please, say aye.
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 Nursing Home Advisory Committee, four appointments.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to table, all in favor of the motion, please, say aye.
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 Criminal Justice Partnership Program Committee, one appointment.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to table, all in favor of the motion, please, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have. Recreation Advisory Board, one appointment.
Chairman, I'd like to nominate Brian Keith Lewis, in town of Brook Drive in Moore'sville.
Okay, Mr. Lewis. All in favor of that motion, please, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any unfinished business?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, could we go back up, if it pleases you, sir, to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council?
Okay.
I believe we have a nominee there, Ms. Sandy Albert.
Sandy Albert?
Yeah, she's a behavioral specialist for the school system.
Okay.
And I'd like to nominate her, if it pleases the chair.
Okay. Ms. Sandy Albert, all in favor of that motion, please, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any unfinished business at this time? New business, or is there any new business? Okay. County Manager, forward.
Nothing other than the written report that is placed before you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, sir. No closed sessions denied, I don't think. Okay. Now, have a motion to adjourn.
For anyone?
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, motion adjourned.
All in favor, please, say aye.
Mr. Chairman, I believe this is the second meeting in the month in public comments.
Okay, did we skip public comment? Do we have anybody out there who wanted to speak tonight? We can, we have time. You may come up at this time. Okay? Motion to, for adjournment?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
As have.